With our Randolph machine that we're.
That's right, yeah.
Yeah, so without having Dr. Nelson at a at a contract of one hundred and twenty thousand a year. Our professional contracts and services was at two seventy five, two hundred and seventy five thousand. I I cut a hundred thousand out of that down to one seventy five. I'm thinking we should be able to do okay with that. Without having Dr. Nelson and then also having the Randolph machine, which I have kind of a breakdown of of that. And a little bit, then we we shouldn't have to have as many autopsies. And utilize NMS Toxicology Lab. We can hopefully just utilize WSP, which doesn't cost us anything. Indigent burials was at five thousand six hundred. And we get a really good deal from the place that that we're having our indigents taken care of. So I cut that forty nine hundred. Because I think last year we were about a little under seven hundred. So I I cut it down to seven hundred. Mileage, we cut two hundred tuition and registration down to seven hundred. Or sorry, cut seven hundred out of that. We do have a few deputies that should be getting certified. So we'll have to pay for that. So that's should be included in there. Airfare, we cut six hundred, repairs and maintenance, five hundred. Copies, it was only thirty six, we cut that down. Dues and subscriptions, six hundred and fifty. Printing and binding, we really don't do that. So I just I just cut that out. It's only fifty dollars, but and then in our other line item, we cut it five hundred. So if you can see, our approved budget for twenty twenty five was one million three sixty four forty six. Twenty twenty six and twenty seven budget should be one million two thirty eight, five fifty four. With a budget cut of one hundred and twenty one thousand eight ninety two. And then I just kind of broke it down from the budget item. The cut items was at three eighty four, three thirty six, and then the new one is at two twenty four, six hundred. For the total for all those items is one hundred and fifty nine thousand, seven hundred and thirty six. On this one, I kind of just broke it down for you. Christie pulled numbers for for what we had for autopsies. Last year in twenty twenty four. Just kind of breaks it down to in twenty twenty four, we had seventy nine full autopsies. Six were infants and seventy three were adults. With that, over on the other side, it it states what we get back from the state for autopsies. For for children under three, we get a hundred percent back. So that's what toxicology, autopsy, everything. And then our autopsy reimbursements with all of that included. For anybody above that is forty percent. So the total cost for twenty twenty four was one hundred and seventy three thousand, seven hundred. Not including toxicology costs. So which I've stated before, if it's a pending, so most likely drug related. Pending toxicology, then we send to NMS Toxicology Lab, which costs us, costs us more. Dr. Nelson had fifty five full autopsies. That's not including the consults and and. Viewings and and stuff like that to go over cases with them. So but he performed those fifty two adults and three infants. And then contract amount ten thousand a month for a hundred and twenty thousand a year. Average cost of each autopsy equaled about twenty one, two thousand, one hundred and eighty one. And that's including the infants and children. Which I think I had mentioned before, other other pathologists. They have a different scale, rate scale for different cases. Infants, children are more homicides are more. Dr. Nelson was just a flat fee for didn't matter what it was. Dr. Luxina completed twenty full autopsies, which were seventeen adults. And that was an average of twenty one hundred each totaling about thirty five thousand, seven hundred. Three infants, the infants were thirty two hundred each. So that was about ninety six hundred. So we took his total for the autopsies was forty five thousand, three hundred last year. Dr. Burt completed four. And then those breakdowns are are there. So we paid her about eighty four hundred. And then the total consults. So Dr. Dr. Nelson, it it was a flat fee for whatever autopsy consults, anything like that. We could call it at any time. Now, other ones that if we call and ask questions, they usually charge a a fee. I think Dr. Luxina's is three hundred and fifty. For consults. And then externals are twelve hundred. So it's. It it does cost us more if we have a different pathologist. But there's nothing we can do about that now. So the total cost of autopsies, including full external and consultations, was a hundred and seventy five thousand, two fifty last year. The next the next page goes over autopsy reimbursements for the for twenty twenty four. We had a total reimbursement of eighty four thousand, fifty dollars and seventeen cents. Total reimbursement for the half, the first half was forty two, a little over forty two thousand. And that also included the the toxicology and all of that. Total charges for the adult autopsies was eighty, little over eighty eight thousand. Forty percent of that was thirty came back to us and that was thirty five thousand, three sixty eight. And then infants and children was about just under seven thousand, six thousand, eight seventy six. And we get a hundred percent of that back. So the second, the second part. For reimbursement, so reimbursement is January or yeah, January through the end of June. I have to have it in by July fifteenth, something like that. And then from July first to the end of December. And then February, February fifteenth is when I have to have that second portion in. So we don't, we don't ever see that second half until the following year. So. That was forty one thousand, eight oh five. With total charges for adults was seventy five thousand, seven twenty three. Forty percent of that coming back was thirty thousand, two eighty nine, fifty seven. And then another eleven thousand, five fifteen for the infants and children.
Dana, how long does it take to get that reimbursement?
What's that?
How long does it take to get the reimbursement?
It usually takes a little while to get it. I don't even remember when it came back. So how it happens is we all submit for it. We have to send it to the state. And then they they look through everything, then then they cut a check. To the the treasurer. The Washington Association Treasurer, which is also on the Vic Board. So he takes care of all of the reimbursements for everybody. So then once he gets that, he deposits that. And then they get they get cut back to us. So. Actually, no, I'm sorry. I'm I'm wrong. I'm I'm thinking of the other reimbursements. That one, I think, comes directly from the state. Yeah, yeah, but he he also helps out with that facilitating everything and and stuff. So I would say it takes probably at least a few months.
So are you pretty tight the beginning of the year? What because you're there's things that you pay all upfront. To the county internal services and then you're waiting for that reimbursement. Are you pretty tight that first little bit? No?
Um, I don't think so. I think I think we're I think we're pretty good. Because that that's all coming out of. That all is coming out of our. Professional services. So we have that in the beginning of the year and then we draw from that.
Okay.
So.
We're also a part of the general fund, so.
Yeah.
There, there is plenty of cash balance in that fund at the beginning of the year.
So I.
The reimbursement just go to the coroners, right? I'm assuming it does. It doesn't. To to. Yeah.
Yeah.
But like the doctors, if they do something and send it in, they don't get reimbursed. Yeah, it's really to the.
Yeah, the doctors.
Contract between you and them.
Yeah, it's a con for the doctors, it's a contract between us and then we pay them. And then we we keep track of all of that and then we submit for reimbursement at the at the end of the term. Yeah. So this one is kind of on the Randolph machine. Just to give you a little bit more information. The Randolph machine is an analytical instrument that performs clinical chemistry tests on blood samples. So it's a in-office way of finding out a little bit faster than sending it off to the lab. So they used to have. Only the qualitative. Qualitative data, so it didn't really do much for us. And so I didn't think it was feasible for us to spend money on that. When when we could just do one of our in-house tests, which I explained to you before. But now they have the quantitative ones. So they were actually down last week, working on that, updating it and then training. On how to use that. So Chrissy was going over that with me earlier today. It's it's not exactly what I thought it was going to be, what they keep saying it's gonna do. But we we should still be able to to use it pretty much like like what we thought. And then it'll still have to go. The blood samples will still go to WSP Toxicology Lab because it's a board certified laboratory. And then we'll just we'll get those back. But from what I've heard from other other counties that use it. They. They say that it's it's pretty close, that it's not like super far off to where we would have to change something. And it would make a huge difference there. So but we should be able to. Sorry, we should be able to utilize that. It will allow us to sign death certificates out sooner instead of pending them. And so families will have results sooner. It will also allow us to utilize the information better to determine whether or not we do need an autopsy. And what I say with that is because of the drug related ones, we have a lot of drug related. Cases that come in that don't have any medical history to back that up. So they will need an autopsy. In in order to to make sure that we're not missing something. And if that if the toxicology comes back not high enough and we didn't do an autopsy, then then that's a problem. So covering our bases there, but this this should help us in determining. Whether that's going to be necessary or not. So we should be able to cut down on those. And then it it'll help eliminate the need for utilizing NMS Toxicology Lab. Which costs us money and we can we can just send it to WSP. NMS, I know this is I've gone over all of this stuff with you guys before, but NMS costs. For standard, it's about a hundred and fifty eight dollars a test. And then expanded is about two forty three and plus. It depends on if if there's certain drugs or whatever that that we suspect or know. Some of those are an additional cost because they don't come in that group. They're individual ones. So. But it should help eliminate on that, too.
Dana, are there any ongoing costs with that machine?
Yes, our yearly, our annual cost is eight thousand. So and then each test is is about fifty dollars compared to one hundred and fifty three and two hundred and forty three. So and then and then if if it comes back with with something. Then we can also eliminate the two thousand plus for an autopsy. So it it should, in the end, it should be really good for us. So. So utilizing the next page is utilizing. The Randolph machine to cut autopsy and toxicology costs. So there's just kind of a breakdown. And twenty four, we performed thirty five drug-related deaths. That were autopsies due to lack of medical history. So that alone was about seventy three thousand, five hundred. And that's at thirty five times just a a flat fee of twenty one hundred. So if if we can utilize this machine to say, yes, they they have a a certain level or whatever. Then then we can, we wouldn't have to perform an autopsy for that. Cutting cutting a cost a great deal. And then I kind of went over that. So Chrissy broke it down of if it's for those. If we had this, then for fifty dollars for each case times thirty five, that would have been seventeen hundred and fifty dollars. And then. Average cost is about two forty three for expanded and a hundred and fifty eight for average NMS. Which I I already explained that. So if you go thirty five times two forty three, that's about eighty five hundred dollars. Which is still, I mean. Way less. Than than what we than what we would without it.
About a little over ten thousand compared to seventy three thousand.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, that's quite a difference.
Yeah. So, yeah, and if if you if you consider, well, say maybe about. Say about sixteen hundred, sixteen thousand if for the annual fee for for the eight thousand. And then and then doing the, you know, two hundred and forty three for NMS would have been that. But but yeah, if you did the eight thousand and then the just the fifty dollars for thirty five. So, yeah, about a little over ten thousand. And then. The the next one is just just kind of showing you a breakdown of tox only. That would be if if we know they're drug related, they come back with drugs in their system, but they also have medical history. Then we don't, we wouldn't do an autopsy, but we would send it off and pinned the death certificate. So we would send it off to NMS and that's where we would have the expense of of the toxicology. So and that's just kind of a breakdown for that. And that was, I think Chrissy said there was twenty four of those. So that cost was about just under forty seven hundred. So. And then I just did the conclusion. I believe that the coroner's office should be able to assist the county in the budget reduction. In the main areas of auto autopsies and toxicology expenses by implementing the Randolph machine. With the new qualitative quantitative testing. This is not a and will not eliminate autopsies. Standard autopsies for will still do those. It it's just mainly going to eliminate the the. The drug related ones that would typically not not need one as long as we as long as we knew. So cutting back on those would typically not be necessary with drug-related overdose tests. But the rising amounts of drug-related deaths across the United States and nationwide, the process will allow us. To know the levels within minutes. I think it was about what thirty minutes? Yeah, so the results come back in about thirty minutes. As to sending the toxicology off and paying to have it expedited. Or performing an autopsy in cases cases that the levels aren't high enough. So.
One of the major cuts that you had, Dana, was your indigent burial expense. How did it go from where it was last year to where it's at this year? Did we go from like actual burial to cremation or what?
Oh, no, no, we do cremation for indigents. So we we pay. We pay very little. Most most other, most places have to pay. And it goes off of the funeral home on on what they're willing to work with us. And when I put it out there, when I when I took over in twenty three, when I put it out there, I only got. Well, I got two two back and the one that that we had, they came back at. Way lower than anybody else. Typically, it's about five hundred on up per per indigent. Some counties end up paying the full price of twenty five, three thousand. Yeah, so we're very fortunate that way, that we've gotten them to work with us on that. So and that that goes for transport, coming up, picking them up, taking them down, taking care of them and and bringing them back. So. So I think we had kept the budget at the same amount, but that's why I I we never we never used. Close to that. I think it was kind of put at that because of the costs in the past. And our indigents are just going up. Now, I I don't want to just say indigents because a lot of them are unclaimed. So families just won't step in and take care of that. So then it ends up falling on the county.
Good job on your reduction. What's that? Just refuse paying it, leaving them there?
Yeah, and I I really feel like that needs to go back to legislation to do something about that. Because most of our people, I did at one time, I figured out how many. We have them listed, whether they're abandoned by family and that's what we label them abandoned by family because they have family. But families just, they won't step up or they don't want anything to do with them or, you know. So it's it's pretty sad to think that. But we'll we'll label them abandoned by family or a true indigent is one that absolutely has nobody. And that's where that's where it falls on the county. But the other one ends up falling on the county, too, because there's nothing in legislation. That is going to push for them to do anything. Any other questions?
Thank you. Good job.
You're welcome.
So our last department is going to be Parks and Rec.
I did try to message her, so hopefully she is able to come through.
He's got a wide, a big territory covered. There's somebody coming down the, it wasn't highway, it was a wild.
In a county vehicle.
We'll just recess.
Okay, move back out of recess.
Afternoon commissioners. Sean Ray from Public Works. Today we are here for the twenty twenty-six Parks Budget Review. Sorry, it's the first time using this touchscreen. This is exciting. Just an overview on kind of the Parks Department itself maintains eleven county parks. We have two full-time FTEs. We have Alyssa here with us as well. Usually we have three summer help to help out in summertime, keep that grass cut, make everything look good. And then getting into the actual budget of it, there's not a whole lot of significant changes. We have one very large item over two years. And then our repairs and maintenance is always a floating item, depending on what kind of projects we want to correct or keep on going. A big one for twenty twenty-six is the Riverside bathrooms. Alyssa can give a little bit more information on that side of it.
Yeah, so we have four restrooms at Riverside. Two of them were remodeled a couple of years ago with a grant from RCO. Now, the back two bathrooms have not been updated since they were built in the seventies. The plumbing needs to be updated. The whole thing is not up to ADA standards, so it's, it's time.
You're looking at RCO for some help on that again, or is that, that's just us?
Yeah, that's us. I tried to go for a repairs and maintenance grant a year ago and they're not going to have those again.
Oh.
So it's one of those things where they don't really fund projects like that. It's more of new things.
Yeah, okay.
And with the budget itself, you'll see that Parks has a second bars numbers associated with it. That's going to be for Harry Gardner Park. We do separate those dollars out because we do have a volunteer group out there. I'm not sure if you guys are familiar with that, or if you are, we can give you more.
This one out by Toodle, right? Yeah.
Yeah, so we have the Friends of Harry Gardner Park group. They're actually the ones that brought the park back. And they do a ton of volunteer work out there. So, great group.
And then on the bottom line here, we do have an ongoing liability with Riverside Park in conjunction to property sales from twenty sixteen and the RCO grant programs. Just want to keep sure that's on your minds. From a revenue point of view, the park doesn't have a lot of revenues. It's mainly going to be bookings either Riverside for picking tables, pavilions, or at Harry Gardner for campsites or RV sites. Not a lot of change there. The larger project we want to talk about though is the Riverside Legacy Park we looked at. That does have some revenues associated with that, with the RCO as well. And then we also have some of the local dollars more from the rural development and the Cook Ferry dredge boils accounts.
The, the ball fields like at Riverside? Are they, do we get anything off of that, or, or is that just we, Lee uses them or however we do it?
They use them. So for the softball fields, they do a lot of the maintenance on the infield. We're responsible for the outfield. And then we don't, we don't charge money for that.
Okay.
Or something for the community to do.
Kind of reciprocal thing. They take care of some, we do. Okay. Yeah.
Isn't it?
And then from here, then from here really turning over to Alyssa to talk about the legacy project and the ideas there.
So the, the project itself, it's going to come in, basically, we're going to do it in two different pieces. So the first part is going to be the new playground. That's one of the playground models I'm looking at. We're going to come up with two, two different ideas. And then I'm going to take it to the elementary schools and the kids at the schools are going to vote. So whichever playground has the most votes is going to be the one that we decide to purchase. So it's kind of our community outreach part of our grant.
And I believe Sven handed out some handouts that showed some additional concept ideas. I don't know if you had a chance to review some of those.
Monkey bars are old. That's not so cool anymore. Although my daughter likes them.
You might have to vet those through risk. I just wanted to add, so Savannah Clement, Public Services, just working with Alyssa on that RCO project. The, what you're looking at is a conceptual design that we worked with Aetna on to provide us for, you know, grant funding, pursuing grant funding, and also to take with us to, to the DC trip to try to secure more funding. And an update on that is we were able to, thanks for the rural development funds of the county committed to this project, able to meet our goal for the full, full funding of this project. So, you know, for Kathy and for the board, thanks again for that because that put us kind of over that finish line to, to start ramping up on the actual projects. We're pretty excited.
So this slide basics shows what a pump track is. There's always, there's always that discussion of what is a pump track? And that's a picture of one right there on the left. The one, the picture on the right is, basically it's just an idea of what it could be designed like. Each, each pump track that's created is it's special, it's unique to its own specific park. They're not just a model that you buy and that's what you get. This one, we're going to be working with a separate group, bike enthusiasts that are going to help with the design portion. So another part of community engagement.
Alyssa, you kind of shared something this morning. We met before this afternoon's meeting earlier today. And I was under the impression that Longview was pursuing a new pump track, which would have put two in our community, which would have been great. Alyssa just told me that that is not moving forward because they, their funding fell through. So we will pretty much have the only newer pump track in the area. I think Ridge, Ridgefield's putting one in.
Ridgefield supposedly is putting one in. They made a post about it on Facebook, but the closest one is Portland and that one is packed. And it's just, it's overused. Pump tracks are really popular right now because anybody can use them. Any, any group skill level, you got kids on strider bikes, you have BMX bikes, you have mountain bikes, skateboards, scooters, you name it, anybody can use it.
So it's really designed around a lot of wider range of uses, unlike Kelsa over there is, is that be more of a
So that's a, that's a
Skateboard.
Yeah, that's a skate park. This is for anything and anything that has wheels, basically, you can use on those.
Can they, I, I, I know because I, I've seen a couple of people, they, they post they, they do bicycle races. Would this host anything like this, or is it just more for?
This is going to be more for neighborhood fun. Those, those tracks are millions of dollars. That'd be great, but you know, that's, that's something that's a big deal. I mean, they have huge competitions on them. Yes, I've seen those. But this one's a little bit smaller.
All right. Cool.
I don't think my quad is going to fit on that very well.
No.
Is it open for motorized vehicles?
No.
Well, Riverside is a place for it and Lexington, it's just a grow, growth area.
Yeah, and the whole idea is we're trying to find something for teenage kids to do because we have this age gap where there's nothing for them to do out in Lexington. So this is something that anybody can use.
I did want to add on one, one slide because I just found this out this morning too. Is, you know, the park board makes certain decisions that affect our local park system for Calts County anyway. And they have been discussing looking at addressing some fees at Harry Gardner. I don't know if that'll move forward, so it was not included in this presentation, but that's something that we would likely bring to the fee, the fee schedule, and it would affect revenues for Harry Gardner Park. But we don't know for sure where that's going to go, but if that comes up and you wonder why we didn't go over it, we just don't have the information yet or, or, or the approval from the board. So.
For like people camping and hooking up?
Yeah, so that's for tent sites and RV sites. It wouldn't affect picnic sites or the pavilion.
Do you have any issue with, I don't think that we do. Do you have any issue with long-term out there that?
So we
Sometimes they, they tend to like turn it into people's homes. You know what I mean?
So we have a seven-day stay limit right now. So after seven days, they have to leave for three. Every winter, we usually get one or two that they stay for seven, they leave for three, and then they come back for their seven. But I don't really have any problems in any problems that we have.
Then we really just want to open up for questions or conversation with the board on parks itself.
I did have one question when, while you were gone, while you were on your way. I got asked about painting pickleball lines on the courts out there.
Oh, yeah.
What was the question?
The We would do it.
Can we redo it?
If we would paint pickleball lines.
So the lines have been painted. They were painted three weeks ago.
Oh, cool. So there's pickleball courts out there.
Yep. So there's four pickleball courts, two have nets, two do not. People ring their own nets. And then we also have one tennis and it's all painted. And the basketball court is also painted.
Cool. I will let them know. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate your time.
Is that all till tomorrow, Sues? Okay. Guess I don't see anything else soon. I think we're good. We will adjourn. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.